Good evening, good evening, and welcome to this live Rappahannock Electric Cooperative Telephone Town Hall Meeting we have for you this evening. You are live on the line with Rappahannock Electric Cooperative, also known as REC. We are calling out to you this evening to open up the conversation and answer any questions that you may have. To get in line with a question is to press, the way you do that is to press zero on the keypad on your phone. Again, to get in line with a question, press zero on the keypad on your phone. You can do that now or at any time throughout the duration of this call. I will be taking those questions live, but if you prefer not to go live, but still want to join our discussion, still press zero on the keypad on your phone. Just let your operator know that you prefer not to go live, and I can read that question over the air for you. Please bear with me as I go through this a few more times as we are dialing out 2,000 of members this evening. So again, good evening and welcome to everyone who is just joining us. You are live on the line with Rappahannock Electric Co-op, also known as REC. We are calling out to you this evening to open up the conversation and answer any questions that you may have. If you have questions, comments, or concerns, please don't hesitate to press zero on the keypad on your phone. We already see some folks taking us up on that, that is excellent. We do these calls to reach out to you, we want to hear what's important to you. So again, press zero on the keypad on your phone to weigh in with a question. If you'd rather not go live, that's okay, still press zero. We want you involved in this evening's discussion. Just let your operator know that you prefer that I read your question over the air, and that is no problem. Most importantly, we just want to get your questions answered. So again, I'll go through this a few more times as we continue our dial-out to more and more members. So good evening and welcome, everyone. You are live on the line with REC, Rappahannock Electric Cooperative. We have a very special telephone town hall meeting for you this evening. In just a moment here, I'll be turning this over to our President, Kent Farmer. He has lots of information for you this evening. We also have a few announcements, so stick around for those, and some polling questions that we would like your opinions on. So stay on the line with us for all of those. So again, press zero on the keypad on your phone to get in line with a question this evening and join our conversation. Last time here, I'm going to welcome everyone. So good evening and welcome to everyone who is just joining us. You are live on the line with Rappahannock Electric Cooperative. We have a special telephone town hall meeting for you this evening. Again, Rappahannock Electric Cooperative, also known as REC. We do these calls to reach out to you, open up the conversation. We want to hear what's important to you. So please press zero on the keypad on your phone to get in line with any questions, comments, or concerns. We will be taking those live here in just a moment. If you'd rather not go live, simply tell your operator that, and I can read your question over the air. There's no problem with that either. So again, stay on the line. We have some announcements and some polling questions where we need your opinions on those as well. So last time, press zero on the keypad on your phone to get in line with that question. And with that, it is now my pleasure to turn this over to our President, Kent Farmer. Kent, please take it away.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kent Farmer, I'm President and CEO of Rappahannock Electric Cooperative. I am so glad that you all have joined us for our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. We are hosting this event tonight to give you an opportunity to ask any questions you have about your cooperative. Your comments and concerns are important to us, and they help us better serve you. Last week, we hosted our annual meeting of members, and over 6,400 of our member owners participated to elect the Board of Directors who represent you. During that meeting, we shared updates on your cooperative and answered questions from members. We host these events so that we can, you can speak with us directly to ask your questions and learn more about your cooperative. We are proud to be your electric service provider. As an electric cooperative, we are committed to the communities where you live and work, because that's where we live and work. REC serves over 167,000 connections in portions of 22 Virginia counties. We have approximately 400 employees reporting to our local offices, working to meet your needs every day. At the annual meeting last week, I gave the membership an update on our accomplishments for 2017, and I am pleased to tell you it was another extremely successful year for your cooperative. We were very successful financially, and as a result of that financial success, we will be refunding more than $6 million to you all in the form of a credit on your November electric bill. So be on the lookout for that. In addition to our financial success, though, we also attended more than 230 events that were hosted throughout our service territory, where we were there to talk to you, to tell you more about the co-op, and to be able to answer your questions. As a result of the successes that we had during 2017, you all responded with extremely good member satisfaction results to our surveys. So I want to thank you for that. Reliability was also extremely good in 2017. Unfortunately, though, 2018 has not started off so well. We had a very significant storm that hit the western part of our service territory in March, and just did devastating damage. It, we had members that were without service for as many as five and six days. But fortunately, we had a lot of help that came in to help us get you back on, and fortunately, we were able to resolve that issue pretty quickly. But summer storms have continued, and as a result, our reliability numbers so far in 2018 have not been nearly as good as they were in 2017. I want you to know, though, that we are very aware of that. We are monitoring where those outages are occurring, and we're doing everything that we can to prevent them from occurring in the first place. But when they do occur, we are trying to get your service reconnected as quickly as we possibly can. Whether it's removing trees that are hazards to our power lines, or implementing new tools like MyREC Smart Hub to help you easily manage your electric account with us. As we move forward, we will continue to be focused on your needs, your expectations, and what we can do to better serve you. We work for you, you're our member owners. We want to hear from you. You have a voice in your cooperative, and tonight, we come to you to listen. And with that said, let's go ahead and get started with the questions.
Absolutely, thank you so much. That was Kent Farmer, our President and CEO. If you have just joined the call, you are live on the line with Rappahannock Electric Cooperative. We're doing this telephone town hall meeting for you, and our first live caller of the evening is Ricky. Ricky, you are live on the line, sir, please go ahead with your question.
I want to know why my bill went up $100 in the last two months.
Okay, Ricky, thank you very much for your question. Our rates did go up. We increased our rates in March for the first time, quite frankly, in about 20 years as it pertained to our distribution cost. But we also implemented for the first time this year, summer rates. Our summer rates are higher than our winter rates. And the reason that we made that change to our rate structure is because it ties to our costs. Our power cost, which represents somewhere between 60% to 70% of how much you all pay each month, is determined by the peak usage that occurs during the summertime. So by raising our rates slightly in the summertime, we wanted to give you, the member, the appropriate price signal. So my guess is that with those two increases, that's why you're paying more this summer. Fortunately, as of September 1, those rates go back down, and so the next eight months, you will be paying rates that are less than our summer rates. I hope that answered your question, Ricky, but also would like for you to know that, take a look at your usage on a month-by-month basis, and if you notice that your usage is going up more than what you think it should, don't hesitate to call us. We'll be happy to come out and help you inspect your home and try to determine what's causing the usage to go up, and give you some tips on how to control that. So again, I hope that answered your question, Ricky.
Thank you so much, Kent, and thank you, Ricky, for your participation this evening. We're going to go to another live caller here in just a moment. But as promised, we do have some polling questions for you this evening, as well as some very important announcements. I'm going to do our first polling question of this evening. So simply, you're just going to vote by pressing the buttons on the keypad on your phone. You have two options on this one, and I'll read the question twice. Question goes like this. Do you plan to purchase an electric vehicle within the next five years? Press one for yes you do, and two for no you do not. So again, we want to know, do you plan to purchase an electric vehicle in the next five years? Press one for yes, and two for no. All right, and while we are weighing in, while everyone's weighing in on that, thank you for your participation. I have an important announcement for you here. Want to know, as a member of Rappahannock Electric Cooperative, you can now subscribe to the Cooperative SunShare program. Cooperative SunShare gives REC members the power to purchase 50 kilowatt-hour blocks of solar energy. You get the benefits of solar without any onsite equipment or maintenance. In this program, any residential member, regardless of whether they own their home or rent, simply purchases blocks of solar energy. To subscribe, you can call 1-800-552-3904, or visit www.myrec.coop, C-O-O-P, /sunshare. All right, we're going to go on to our live questions now. We're going to go to, it looks like Ricky, I believe your question, or your name is? Go ahead with your question, please.
Yes, I'm a Madison County resident. And here we are, 90 miles or so from Washington DC. We just did an exercise with Comcast. About a quarter of a mile down the road from us, there is cable. And then in this exercise, there are electric lines in part of our development, which were just a few miles off of Route 29 and very close to Culpeper. However, we were told by Comcast that REC and Comcast can't work together with the existing REC lines to then assist and reduce the cost for cable install out here. So with the very great difficulties with connectivity in the rural areas that have been very slow to get on board with technology, it seems to me it would be to the benefit of REC to look to ways for utilities to cooperate with existing infrastructure to help your customers be able to live and work, telework, do the things that are necessary in this current time. So I wanted to know why there is a problem with REC being unable to work with other utilities like Comcast to benefit the customers. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. It's a great question, and it gives me an opportunity to let you know that we do have agreements with Comcast. And Comcast is attached to a large number of our poles. Comcast doesn't like that they have to pay us a rent to put their equipment on our poles, and so my guess is that's why they gave you the response that they did. But the question about connectivity is an important one, and we talked about that the other night at our annual meeting. We have been working now for probably a decade to try to help facilitate bringing broadband to our rural customers. Broadband, however, is not like electricity in that it is not a regulated utility. And even though we are making every attempt we can to solve that issue, we're not going to invest your money foolishly into assets that won't provide the service that you want or the payback for your investment that you made. However, what we are doing is installing our own fiber network. We will begin that in 2019. And our intent is to install a large enough fiber cable to be able to provide that to internet service providers, to be able to lease that equipment so that they can provide our customers with broadband access. We are doing everything that we can to try to help facilitate that. But again, because these are your dollars that we are investing, we're trying to make absolutely sure that you're getting the adequate return for the dollars of yours that we are investing along those lines. But again, it is not a regulated utility like electricity. We don't want to go out and invest a great deal of money, and then a new technology or a new company comes in and makes that investment obsolete. So I know that was a long answer to a relatively easy question, but hopefully, that explains what we're doing. And again, stay tuned, because we are, again, trying to solve that issue.
Excellent, thank you so much, sir, and thank you for your participation this evening, ma'am. I have another polling question ready for you this evening. We had great participation on the first one, thank you so much for that. We love to know what's important to you. So second question goes like this, again, just two answers. Pushing buttons on your keypad on your phone to vote. Question goes like this. Would you be interested in purchasing a whole-house generator from REC? Press one for yes, and two for no. So again, would you be interested in purchasing a whole-house generator from REC? Press one for yes, and two for no. While you weigh in on that, we're going to go to Becky live next. If you have questions about anything you've heard this evening, press zero on the keypad on your phone, and we'll try to get you in line. And with that, we've got Becky up live next. Becky, please go ahead with your question.
I would like to know, when the big storm came through in March, I had about $300 worth of groceries that went bad. And I would also like to know, my daughter has moved out of my house, and I'm one person, and my electric bill has not gone down at all.
Well, Becky, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your question, Becky. As it pertains to your lost food, we apologize that that happened. The storm that you're referring to in March, we ended up having hurricane-force winds that went across our system for the better part of 36 hours. We had well over 100 poles broken, not to mention the miles of conductor that were laying on the ground that we ended up having to get out there and reinstall. If we have an equipment failure that is not a result of nature, then obviously, if you have food spoilage, then we've got insurance to help repay you for that. But in the event of storms, acts of God, that you just can't get insurance to cover those types of things. Or if you could, we probably wouldn't be able to afford the premium on that. So that's why we would not have reimbursed you for lost food in that storm situation. As for your bill not going down since your daughter has moved out, again, let's take a look at the usage on a month-to-month basis at your residence and try to determine what's causing that usage, whether it's heating, air conditioning, lighting, or other appliances. Sometimes, the number of people in the house doesn't necessarily impact the usage as much as you would think. But as I told the previous caller, if you're concerned about your bills being too high, we will be happy to come out and help you inspect your home to see if there are things that we can recommend that you do to be more efficient in the utilization of your power. So again, don't hesitate, give us a call. We'll come out and try to help you figure out exactly why your bill is what it is on a monthly basis. Again, Becky, thank you for your call.
Yes, thank you so much for your participation this evening, Becky. We're going to go to Ruby next, but first, I have an announcement. The announcement is this. Join Rappahannock Electric Cooperative during National Drive Electric Week as we go green together with our electric vehicle. Come see us at several events around the REC service territory starting September 1 at the Tastes of Mountains Festival in Madison County. Find dates for all of the events where you can learn about our electric vehicle in your September issue of Cooperative Living Magazine. And with that, now we've got Ruby up live next. Ruby, please go ahead, you are live.
No, I don't want no electric car, not me, not me.
Okay, Ruby, go ahead with your question.
I want to have one if you give me, I want to have one if you give me one.
All right, Ruby, it looks like you, did you have a question? Or did you just want to tell us you didn't want that?
No, I don't want that, I pushed number two, I don't want it.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, Ruby, for your question tonight.
I got a brand-new Ford sitting here in my driveway, I like that.
Okay, all right.
Ruby, are you happy with your cooperative service? Or are there some things that you're concerned about that you'd like for me to address tonight?
Oh, I'm happy with you all, and I'm happy with what I got.
Well, thank you so much, Ruby, and we appreciate your call.
I've been well pleased with y'all.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much for your participation this evening, Ruby. Our next live caller of the evening is Janet. Janet, please go ahead, you are live. Janet, are you there?
Yes, I'd like to know.
Go ahead, you are live.
We seem to get frequent power blips where the power goes off and then comes back on, almost on a daily basis, and then sometimes it happens two or three times throughout the day. And it seems to happen whether we're bright and sunny, or if there's a storm, or regardless of the weather. So I'm curious, what's going on there?
Great question, Janet. That happens from time to time. We will get a tree limb, for example, that may be brushing up against the phase wire that will cause it to blink. And when that blink occurs, it is our equipment working like it's supposed to. If the branch just brushes against the line, our equipment notices it, but doesn't cut it off completely at that point. If the branch stays against the line, it causes a short that will kick it off completely. But if you wouldn't mind leaving me your address, Janet, so that we can come out and inspect the lines that serve your residents to try to identify what's causing that frequent blinking or temporary outage. So if you don't mind, you can, you don't have to give us your address while we're live on this telephone town hall, but please call back into the office and give us your address so that we can come out and do an inspection for you. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Excellent, thank you so much, Janet. And we have Virginia up live next. Virginia, go ahead, you are live.
Yes, first, I would like to thank REC for coming out here just recently. Our lights come on and off a couple of times, and I called REC. And I didn't know they were sending someone out. The guy came out, and he checked the box to make sure it wasn't hot. He also checked the pole and noticed that there was, I don't know what the part name of it is, but it needed a part that would keep the transformer from lightning striking the transformer, and also could, of course, the house on fire. But he put that part on, which was comforting to me and my family. But I would like to thank REC for that. My next, my question is, why did our old accounts, account numbers, change? I had an older account number for a long time, and then it changed and went to two different accounts, because we have a light bulb. And I was just wondering why it changed.
That's a great question, Virginia, and we appreciate you bringing that up. When we introduced our new Smart Hub computer software back at the beginning of 2017, it required that we changed all of the account numbers. That was just part of the requirements of the new software system. We knew that that was going to create questions, and in some cases, problems for our member owners, and we tried to deal with that. Unfortunately, we didn't deal with it perhaps as good as we could have. I think we've since then gotten it straight. But it was pretty much driven by the new software that we put in place. And the whole reason that we went to the new software was to be able to give our members the ability to manage their own accounts, whether it's a change of address, or to communicate with us electronically. The new software provided that benefit. It also provides you the ability to monitor your usage almost on a daily basis so that you can see from that history of your usage when your bill may spike. It will help you identify what's causing that. If you can look at your usage on a daily basis and then relate that to what was going on in your house during that time, it helps you, as well as helping us, help you figure out how to be more efficient with your usage. It sometimes could be an element that goes out on your water heater. You may still be getting hot water, but it's causing your hot water heater to run twice as hard to give you that hot water. Well, by looking at your usage on a regular basis, it will show those types of things. And when it does, then we can get out and help you get the issue resolved. So again, I hope that answered your question, and we appreciate you calling in. Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you so much, Kent, and thanks for your participation, Virginia. Janet, who was the caller just previous to that, wanted to repeat our office number. Again, the REC office number is 1-800-552-3904 for Janet and everybody else. And we've got Kenny up live next. Kenny, please go ahead, sir, you are live.
Yes, how are you guys doing this evening?
Doing great, Kenny, thank you for calling in.
My question was, I had a garage put up about two years ago. It's off the side of my house, it's a small garage. And I've had the electrical work done and inspected by Rappahannock County Electric. The panel box has been inspected. The only thing I'm waiting for is Rappahannock Electric to hook the service up to it. But their fees is so high, it's only 100 feet that I'm wanting to go, and they want $1,200 to hook up the fee so you guys can start pulling money off me. I would like to be able to start using this electric service, but I don't have the money to do that. Comcast, cable, anybody else provides the service to you so they can immediately start giving you payment. I don't know why you guys' services are so high for this.
I'm not sure either, Kenny. If it's only 100 feet, why it would be $1,200 for us to hook it up? But again, we will, if you'll call the office tomorrow or the next day, we will have somebody come back out and take a look at that for you and hopefully, be able to give you a little bit better number. But one of the policies that we have is a line extension policy. And as long as we're hooking up your house or your garage, and it's within the normal investment that we would make to provide you that service, we don't- we don't charge either. It's just when that... When the member is asking us to do more than what we would normally do in providing service, that we charge for those additional services. And the reason that we do is because if we didn't, we'd have to recover those dollars through our electric rates. And it wouldn't necessarily be fair for the other members to pay for an extension to hook up your garage. So that's why we charge differently for those types of connections. But again, give us a call. We'll come out, take another look at it and see if there's a different way or a better way or at least a cheaper way to try to get that service hooked up for you. Thank you for your call.
All right. Thank you so much for that great question, Kenny. We're going to keep moving along. We have David up live next. David, sir, please go ahead.
Hi. I just want to ask the question of what percentage does the Rappahannock produce energy from nuclear, clean coal, and environmental, say, i.e., solar? And since we know that nuclear and coal is much more cheap, why do we seem to have this push to go for clean solar? I don't understand it.
I think that's a great question and I appreciate you bringing it up. And you're right. The vast majority of the power that comes through Rappahannock that feeds our members is based primarily from nuclear. Roughly 15 and 1/2% of our power comes from nuclear. About 13% comes from coal. And we do have some contracts to purchase solar power and some to purchase wind. You're also right that those renewable power sources, at least for the time being, are more expensive than the traditional fossil-fuel-based production. But going forward, solar prices are coming down. Wind prices are coming down. And once we can figure out how to store the electricity, then we'll be able to take advantage of some of those lower-priced, cleaner generators. But until we can solve the storage issue, the renewable power is going to be a little bit more expensive. What we're trying to do, however, is to balance the cost with the environmental regulations and responsibilities that each of us, whether we're a company or an individual, has. Part of our mission statement is that we want to be as environmentally friendly as we can possibly be in providing you your electric service. And in order to do that, we need to stay familiar with solar energy and wind energy and other forms of renewables. So even though they are a relatively small amount of our overall generation mix at this point, I think as we move forward into the future and technology begins to catch up, if you will, relative to how we can store it, then we'll take even more advantage of it. I hope that answers your question. But again, the emphasis at the Co-op is trying to strike a balance between clean power and affordable power. Thank you for your question, David.
Thank you so much, David. We have Marion up live next. Marion, please go ahead. You are live.
Yes, Mr. Farmer, this is Marion Marshall. I don't understand exactly your pattern of restoring electric to when the storms come through. It seems that the same houses each time... All that stuff. The road that we live on has a river one mile away. You fix all the way on the other side of the river. But on this side, we pay the price. We really do. I understand that. We have bills and do what we're supposed to do. And I understand you're prioritizing, but numbers shouldn't always be the factor.
I don't disagree with you at all, Marion. And again, I appreciate you calling in with a question because that same question, I'm sure, is on a lot of our members' minds. The way we design and build our electric system is, I'm sure you know, we take power from the transmission lines at our substations. And then we have high-voltage lines that run out to distribute the power from the substations. So those lines that are connecting the substation or the high-powered lines coming out of the substation that go out across our distribution system, those are the priorities. Because if we don't get those back on first, then getting your power back on is impossible. We can come back and we can put the line back up, change the poles out. But if the source that's feeding the line that comes back to feed you is out, then even if we get yours fixed, you're still not going to have power until we get those sources fixed. And so what happens? We work on the lines that feed the substations first. Then we work on the substations next. And then the transmission lines or the high-voltage distribution lines that go out to feed the residential sections. So that's the only reason that we go about it the way we do. Again, rebuilding your line doesn't help you at all if the line that's feeding that line is down. So that's why we do it the way we do. And unfortunately, if you are like I am and live on the end of that distribution line, inevitably, we're going to be the last ones to get reconnected in any major outage, which is also why we are now looking at potentially being able to provide members like you with some backup generation. But again, thank you for your question, Mary.
Thank you so much for your participation this evening. Up next, we have Spencer. Spencer, please go ahead. You are live.
Yes, sir. There's quite a few pole lights throughout the counties. Madison Green, Kelpoupper. And most of them are high-pressure sodium.
Yep.
Everything's going green. I was wondering, have y'all considered going LED? And if so, as far as getting y'all's money back first, if you did the households... I mean, you know, there's a lot of houses that are actually renting them from y'all as in from the high-pressure sodium, converting them over to LED. Actually, I'm one of them myself. That's why I'm asking. And go to LED. You'll start getting your money back. And yes, I know it's costs upfront, but yes, in the long run, LED pays for itself.
You're exactly right. And Spencer, we are in the process of changing out our high-pressure sodium lights to the new LED lights. Unfortunately, we have thousands of those LED lights across our system. So it's just going to take us time to get them all changed out to LEDs. Now, if... One of the ways that we're doing that, in addition to a planned replacement for those lights, anytime we have a service call where a member's light has gone out or it's staying on all the time, anytime we have a service call on one of those lights, we go ahead and change it to the LED while we're there. But we are in the process of changing out all of our security lights to the LEDs. I will also tell you, though, that in some of the areas where we have already changed out the high-pressure sodium, which is more of an orange-colored light, to the LEDs, we're getting some complaints that the LEDs are too bright. So, you know, that's something that we're looking at as well because at the end of the day, we want to provide you with the lighting you want. But we also want to make sure that we're not making it something that you don't want because it is a completely different look than the high-pressure sodium. Hopefully, that has answered your question, Spencer. But eventually, you're right. We will have changed out all of those older lights with the new high-pressure... With the new LEDs.
All right, excellent. Thank you so much, Kent, and thank you, Spencer, for your participation. We have John up live next. John, please go ahead. You are live.
Hi, my name is John. I purchased my first property in Clark County in 2001. And the test, the true test, is how long you sit in the dark when bad things happen. And I have to tell you, your response time and your initiatives to diminish the bad things happening has been nothing short of phenomenal because the response time and the time the electric comes back on, you know, a lot of the questions these folks have when you're sitting in the dark, these questions would go away depending on the response time of getting your electricity back. And you guys have done a great job.
John, I really appreciate the compliment. As you know, Clark County was part of the service territory that we acquired back in 2010. And for the first two years or so after that acquisition, we did nothing but clear right-of-way because they were not in good shape, unfortunately, when we took over that system. But we have gotten through that cleanup and I am thrilled to hear that our member owners recognize the efforts that we've taken to improve the quality of service that you folks were used to. And that's what we're doing across our entire system. You know, we don't want you all to be without service at all because quite frankly, when you're not in service, we're not selling kilowatt-hours. So we're going to do everything that we can to keep your power from going out. And when it does go out, we're going to do everything we can to get it back on as quickly and safely as possible. But again, John, thank you so much for that compliment. It means a lot to us.
Thanks so much for your participation. All right, we have a question from Cheryl next. She asks that she not go live, so I'm just going to read her question for her. It goes like this. How do you feel about members putting solar on their roof? Kent?
Well, we don't have a problem with members putting solar on their roof. As a matter of fact, we've helped already well over 500 of our members with both the installation as well as the optimization of the solar installations that they've made. And quite frankly, we are looking at potentially trying to figure out how we can perhaps offer those services to our members in the future. If, again, at the end of the day, if we have a member who wants to take advantage of solar power, we want to be your energy expert. And whether it's solar or whether it's the traditional power source, again, we want to be your go-to company to make sure that you're getting what you're paying for and it gives you the reliability that you're expecting. Because again, at the end of the day, we're your electric company and we want to make sure that you're happy with the electric service you get, whether you're generating it yourself or whether you're purchasing it through us. Thank you very much.
All right, excellent. Sorry, stepped on you there, Kent. Thank you, Kent, and thank you, Cheryl, for your question. Back to our live callers now. Amanda, you are up next. Please go ahead.
Yes, I am referring to a comment that you made earlier from someone's question about the fiber cables and helping with bringing that into the areas, the rural areas for your customers, starting in January of 19. Is that going to be all of your service areas? Because I live on the opposite end of where that other customer lived over in the area of King William, Virginia. And that is a constant source of an issue out here where I live as well with no access to broadband or internet service providers, even cable.
Yep. Amanda, the answer to your question, unfortunately, is that it's probably going to take us somewhere between three and four years to build the fiber network that I was referring to earlier. What we will attempt to do is to connect all 100 of our substations with fiber. But we are also currently working with internet service provider... Independent internet service providers. Down in your area, there's a group called Pumunkinet that we are working with to try to help them facilitate their solutions as well. So while it may not necessarily be tomorrow that we're able to do that, it's certainly something that we're working on. And again, our plans at this point are that we hope to have the 900 or so miles of fiber that we intend to build completed within a three- to four-year timeframe.
All right, excellent. Thank you so much, Kent, for that answer and for that question, Amanda. We have Leona up live next. I hope I said your name correctly. Please go ahead. You are live.
Yes, well, I'm... Why is my light bill almost $300 in the winter time?
As... I assume it's a lot less than that, Leona, in the summer. We are... Again, your electric bill is being determined by the amount of kilowatt-hours that you use in a given month. And typically, in the wintertime, if you have electric heat, then your usage is going to go up, which will cause your bill to go up. But that is typically what would cause an individual's winter usage to be... And bill to be higher. But again, just as I've told each of the previous callers who were concerned about the amount of their bill, let us help you. Let us come out and take a look. You know, it could be that there are air escapes around your windows or doors so that if your heat is running, but if that hot air is escaping out of the envelope of your home, then it's not going to be very efficient. Well, sometimes replacing windows or adding insulation can drastically reduce your usage during the winter months and help you along those lines. So please contact us. Let us come out and take a look and try to help you figure out how to be more efficient in your usage during the winter months. We're happy to do that for you. And thank you, Leona.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Leona. And again, that number to call the office is 1-800-552-3904. And thank you so much for your participation this evening. We have Jeff up live next. Jeff, please go ahead, sir. You are live.
Good evening. I would just want to thank everybody for all the hard work they do when we have a storm and wind event. Everybody works really hard and does a phenomenal job during the outages. With that said, have we been doing any research on possibly putting underground bulk feeder or primary lines in the problematic areas that are extremely inaccessible?
The answer to your question, Jeff, is yes. We are constantly looking at what we refer to as storm hardening on those areas that seem to be getting the brunt of the weather patterns across our service territory. Of the 17,000 miles of line that we have, roughly half of those are already underground. But again, some of our primary feeders are mostly overhead. And the reason that they're overhead is because it is easier to identify where we have problems when there is an outage. You know, if a tree comes down through a line, it's pretty obvious where it's broken and what we've got to do to fix it. If an underground line fails, it takes us... If an underground line fails, it takes us quite a bit longer to figure out why it has failed and where we have to do our repair work. Not to mention the fact that it costs somewhere between four to six times as much to put in underground as it does overhead. So, again, we're trying to strike that balance between reliability and affordability. But we, each year, evaluate all of the circuits across those 17,000 miles of line to identify where we're having the most outages, where we're having the most blinks, interruptions, or anything else. And through analytics, we're determining what the causes of those outages are, and that's helping us figure out what the best solution is. Sometimes it's not just underground. Sometimes it could be as simple as going out and maintaining our rights of way on a more updated schedule. Typically, our rights of ways for our overhead lines get cut on a five-year rotation. But you take a year like this year already, we have had so much rain that the growth in some of those areas has been a lot more this year than it has in years past. So, through the analytics that we're using to try to identify those problems, it's helping us get back out there and perhaps maintain the rights of way a little sooner than we would have otherwise. So, Jeff, I hope that answers your question. But in response, yes, we are taking advantage of underground where it makes sense to do so.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and thank you, Jeff. We have Ray up live next. Ray, please go ahead. You are live.
Hi, my name's Ray. We have underground electricity coming to our house, and we live in a rural, really rural area. However, karma, you have storms and you have outages. And I understand you have to have, you know, maintenance done and fix those outages when they occur. We don't have that many outages. But when you try to fix them, you cut off the electricity to our house. All I'd need to do, all I'd like for you all to do, please, is to notify when you're about to turn the electricity off, so you can maintain those lines and fix those lines, and so we can adjust whatever we're doing. So, we're not in the middle of something and suddenly the electricity goes off. And then it comes back on. It's a very inconvenience, and we've had a couple of refrigerators break because we haven't done certain things when the power goes off. But if we're notified, we can, you know, we would be a lot happier if you would notify us before you just turn the switch off and then turn the switch back on to our house. If, um, thank you.
Ray, that is an excellent point. And we are trying to do a better job of notifying our members when there is going to be a planned outage where we have to take your service, take you out of service in order to do repairs. But in a lot of cases, our outages may be occurring in the middle of the night. And the last thing we want to do is call you in the middle of the night and wake you up to tell you we're going to take your power off for 30 minutes to do a repair. But again, one of the things that we have taken advantage of with this new software that I was referring to earlier are text messaging. So that it gives us an opportunity to text you to let you know that we will be working in your area. So, if you haven't signed up for those text message alerts, please call the office and get signed up for that. In the meantime, we will reevaluate how we're using our messages when we have to disconnect your service simply to do repairs. Thank you very much for your comment and your question.
Thank you so much, Ray. We've got Kyle up live next. Kyle, please go ahead, sir. You are live.
Hi, I just bought a house about two years ago in Front Royal, Virginia. And I just wanted to say, first off, that thanks for coming and cutting down a bunch of trees that were probably going to fall in the power lines as preventative maintenance. And two, you talked about buying solar, and I just wanted to know a little, if you could elaborate on that a little bit, and if there's any incentives for doing such. And three, you had talked about seeing if anyone was going to be interested in purchasing an electric vehicle. Did you guys have any plans on selling products for people in-home for, as far as like charging stations go? And then, I guess the last part would be, being a new member, I lived in Arizona, and they had programs where they would evaluate your electricity usage for a year. And then, the following year or thus forward, you would pay X amount of dollars. So, instead of in the winter time paying $400, $500, it was evenly distributed throughout the 12-month calendar.
Yep.
And then, the following year, it was, again, like prorated, again, adjusting if you use less energy or more energy. And that's...
Great, great questions. Let me start with the last one first, and I'll work backwards. We have a program that we refer to as budget billing or equal monthly billing that does exactly what your previous utility in Arizona does. We will, if you are moving into a new house, obviously, we need to wait a little while to see what the average usage is going to be. But if you've been in the house for as much as a year, we've got that type of data, and we can work with you to set it up for a budget billing program. So, absolutely, we have that, and all you need to do is contact the office to get set up on that. As it pertains to electric vehicles and residential charging, we haven't gotten to that point yet. But we're looking at that. Right now, the first thing that we're trying to evaluate is how to work with the state and local governments in making sure that electric vehicle charging stations are at convenient locations throughout our service territory. But my guess is that as electric vehicles begin to catch on and begin to become more mainstream, that yes, we will be providing you with in-home charging facilities. But even if you decide you want to go to an electric vehicle, Kyle, before we get there, call us. We will still figure out how to help you do that even before we have a program. Because again, at the end of the day, we want to be our members' expert on electric service. So, we'll figure out how to help you get that installed if that's something you want to do. As it pertains to the first question, I think you had relative to solar, there are not incentives at this point to try to get our members to go to solar generation. And unfortunately, it's because, quite frankly, the cost of solar, at least right now, is higher than our average combined rate. But as I mentioned to a caller earlier, the price of solar continues to come down. And again, once we can solve the storage situation, we think that that's going to be, become even more prevalent. And so, we will continue to work with that and to work with our member owners who want to go in that direction. So, stay tuned, keep looking at our website, and as always, don't hesitate to contact our office anytime you have questions, if you want to just see how far along we are and when it may be available. But again, thank you for your call and thank you for your questions, Kyle.
Thank you so much, Kyle. We're going to go to Keith next. We are quickly approaching the end of our hours. We're going to go over a little bit to squeeze in as many questions as we can. With that, we have Keith up live next. Please go ahead, Keith.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm calling, it's kind of a two-part thing. One is, is that this past January, February, March, we went to and stayed in Florida. And while we were gone, our electric bill went really high. And of course, by the time the mail was forwarded and we saw that the electric usage was high, it was kind of late. It was already into March. But when I, I have to compliment, when I did call in and asked about it, the person that I talked to was able to help me work through the bills and saw that it was the meter on our three-car garage that showed a higher than normal usage. And we figured out that it was a space heater that had came on and then never shut off. It was running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that's what was shooting the electric up so high. And they did offer to come by the house and pull the electric meter off to stop the usage, but by then, it was already close to the time to come home. So, my question is, is there a way in the My REC website or somewhere to put or have an alert so that when a particular meter is running more electric than normal, than what the normal should be, to send out an alert saying, hey, there is a problem?
Well, we, that's going to be part of our new software that I talked about earlier, the Smart Hub. Not only will we be able to monitor it, Keith, when you're not there, but the way we've got the Smart Hub set up, you will be able to, through your smartphone, go in and look at your usage on a regular basis. So, hopefully, you will catch it even maybe before we will. But if not, the answer is yes. We will, we always evaluate all of the usage on our meters on a monthly basis. And if we see one that is outside of the realm of normal from a winter or a summer, quite frankly, we do try to let the member know. In the case that you had back in the first part of '17, I'm not sure our Smart Hub was up and running at that particular time. But hopefully, going forward, that will be a benefit that you'll receive from that new software.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. Thanks, Kent, and thanks, Keith. Sorry, Kent, I keep running over you tonight. All right, we have Elizabeth up live next. Elizabeth, please go ahead. You are live.
Hi, I'm actually a customer in the Culpeper area, and I just am calling with more of a comment than anything. I've been a customer for a long time, and, you know, with all the storms and all the harsh weather and everything, between that and all the technicians out fixing everything in the middle of the night, in the middle of really horrific storms, you know, between that and also just calling into customer service, the patience and the helpfulness that everyone that I have dealt with at REC always has, I really just wanted to call in with a comment, just because the fact that it truly is like, it's really nice to be able to ask, you know, as many questions as I have at times, and also having somebody patient on the other end answering everything and really looking into what I'm asking. So, I just wanted to really applaud all of the REC employees because in the Culpeper area, I can, you know, speak for that. It's really just a blessing to be able to know that everybody is working so hard. And I understand, you know, when there's outages, that I have no idea how that whole system works, but I just know that, you know, everybody's working hard to getting everything back on track. So, I just wanted to, you know, let you know that I really appreciate, and I know that I have, you know, many friends that really do appreciate all the hard work that everybody puts in, all of your employees. So, I just wanted to say that.
Elizabeth, thank you so much for the compliments. You're exactly right. A lot of times during storms, we're calling our employees to come to work to fix everybody else's electricity when theirs is off as well. So, in a lot of cases, they're leaving their family at home in the dark to come out and help get everybody else's power back on as quickly as we can. And that's what we do. But it is certainly appreciative to know that our members appreciate that service. So, thank you very, very much for your call.
Thank you, Kent. Thank you so much for your participation, Elizabeth. And with that, we have actually gone over our allotted time, but I need to let these guys go. So, if you still are on the call and have your question, comment, or concerns that did not get addressed, please stay on till the very end of the call. You'll be able to leave us a voice message. On that voice message, please leave us your question, comment, or concern, as well as your first and last name, and the best way to contact you, if that's phone number or email address. And please spell out that contact information slowly so we can jot it down, and a staff member will try to follow up with you. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to you, Kent, for some closing remarks.
Well, again, thank you all for hosting us tonight in this call. As we conclude our time together tonight, I just want to thank everyone who took part in tonight's town hall meeting. I can assure you that we place a great deal of value on your questions, your comments, and your concerns. I also want you to know that you don't have to wait for us to ask. Please call us or contact us at any time that you have questions or concerns. And again, thank you for spending some time with us this evening. It is our pleasure to be your electric service provider, and we want to make sure that you're a satisfied customer. Thank you again, and good night. Again, and good night. Again, and good night. Again.